Good morning, everyone. Welcome and thank you for joining us. Today is Monday, June 26, 2023. We are here at the Laramie County Commissioner's Office in our conference room for a work session regarding emergency management update from our Office of Emergency Management. I am Laramie County Commissioner Jody Shy, we're down here, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. I am joined by my colleagues, Laramie County Commissioner John Kephalis and Laramie County Commissioner Kristin Stevens. Also, at our conference table is County Manager Loretta Volker. And we are going to, I apologize for starting a few minutes late. We've had a pretty busy morning with back-to-back meetings. But I'm going to just turn this over to our outstanding and amazing Director of Emergency Management, Lori Hodges. Lori, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Lori Hodges, Director of Emergency Management for Laramie County. So today, we're going to be focusing on preparedness, mitigation, and resilience, those areas of our program. So it's kind of in two parts. The first half of the meeting is really going to be talking about that preparedness resilience side. And then the second half, we're going to be joined by our Sheriff's Office partners to talk about the mitigation and resilience side. So quickly, though, I did want to give you guys a flood update for the year. We have not had significant damages from any of the flood events that we've had throughout the year. We've had a ton of rain, and I think that the cities have actually had more damages than the county has. I think that a lot of this, some of it, I think, can be due to the work that's been done from all of our partners and from the county on mitigation measures, as well as some of the, like, the flood barrier bags and other options that we've had, as well as the work along the streams, the debris removal. So I don't, I'm not saying that that's everything, but I do think that that really did make a difference from the last, the first two years to now. So talking about mitigation today, I think, is good. We are out of the woods. In the last couple of years, the, the timing of when we've had the most significant rain events and the most significant flooding has been the end of July. So we did meet with the National Weather Service today. We're not supposed to have any real flood risk for most of this week. Limited flood risk toward the end of the week, and then the weekend's supposed to be pretty clear. And then we did talk about how, you know, a lot of warnings are coming out, a lot of watches and warnings, and we're afraid that people are going to get warning fatigue from that. And so, but we're also reluctant to take away the warnings because we haven't had a lot of time yet to test the system. This summer has been a great time for that, though. So after July, if we get through that and we don't see any additional significant rain events, we are going to meet with the National Weather Service hydrologist, and we're going to be changing some of those watches and warnings to lower those, or, I guess, increase the thresholds a little bit. So hopefully, that makes sense. So if you guys get questions, we've had a lot of questions from folks about kind of the warnings, and with nothing happening, why are we getting the flood warning all the time? We are going to be looking at those thresholds after July, after the end of July. Any questions about that?
Just real quick, and those warnings go also out, I mean, I've signed up for alerts and stuff, but I still worry about our tourist population, since we have over four and a half million people coming through our county into the southern part around Rocky. We still have several others that go up, you know, up through Wyoming and up all these areas. How do we, how do they get those warnings?
So they, they do the WEA alerts for certain types of warnings, like the flash flood warnings and otherwise. And that would go to all cell phones in an area, whether they're signed up or not. And then also, they have the keyword option here in the county. So anybody that's traveling through the county can sign up for the keyword alerts, which would then allow them to get any of those warnings.
Well, so I wanted, I had to ask, got asked that question this weekend in Estes, though, by a tourist standing in a coffee line, so.
Yeah, LITA looks at that, the Laramie Emergency Telephone Authority, they look at that. And the National Weather Service sends out messages, either through the emergency alert system or through WEA. And then LITA can also send out the alerts if they don't go to the populations that we need them to.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Kephalis.
Thank you, and thank you, colleagues. Regarding the matter of, we're not seeing any flash floods, and that's great, that's wonderful news. In the burn scar areas, are we still seeing the soils that tend to be hydrophobic? Or have we improved upon that? Is there still a lot of sedimentation runoff that's affecting water quality in the streams and in the rivers?
Well, I'll, I don't know, oh, I'm looking through, I don't know if you have any data on this as well, but I, I've been checking in with our different groups to find out from kind of that local perspective, is the water still running black? Are we seeing a lot of the sediment? We haven't seen a lot of that this year. At least, we're not getting reports of a lot of that this year. And I don't know if you've seen more, because you guys have been in the field more.
So what we've seen out in the field is a lot of grasses have come back in. We've had a lot of reports, since I live in Estes, I tend to swing through the Glen Haven area. The streams there have been running clear. I've only seen a little bit of grayish in the water once out of all of the warnings we've had up in that area. And talking with those folks there, they haven't seen anything like we have in the past two years. So things overall, I think, from just a subjective look, as we're driving around, things are looking much better than they have in the past couple of years.
Sounds like you and I do the same thing. I tend to, like, go up one way to Estes and then back down the other way. I try to go up at least once a week if not hiking, but I'll be up there a couple of times this week for business stuff. But it's interesting, I keep, like, even when I got back from my, from being gone, we had all that rain, and I was, I think you could ask Cole, I was like, what happened? Anything happen? We're flooding, what's going on? So I was really glad and relieved to hear that, so. And I haven't heard from my usual residents who call me in the minute something's happening. They, they send me videos and things, but I haven't heard anything, so fingers crossed, not going with it.
Yeah, we're definitely not out of the woods. Obviously, it's a progression, but we have tested a lot of these areas a lot. Where with High Park, you know, after the 2013 flood, we didn't have a lot of rainstorms that really tested the area. So the hydrologists kept asking me, and I'm like, well, we really haven't had a rain event. This gives us a little bit more data, at least with the amount of rain that we've had and where it's been and the intensity of the rain. So the, I wanted to give a preparedness program update. Camille couldn't be here today, she's sick, so she was going to give this update, but she's been working pretty heavily on the Dare to Prepare program. So that's our new community preparedness program. It's going to, what we're doing is we're doing a partnership with the City of Fort Collins and the City of Loveland. And so each of us is going to teach a different program, and then we're all going to help each other with instructors or otherwise. So each of us is going to host and get people signed up for different programs, and then we're going to share kind of our expertise with each other. It's kind of a force multiplier. So we're doing the Dare to Prepare program. It's a preparedness program, but it has a lot of resilience components in it. It's a lot of social capital. I think you've heard Camille talk about that, how it has that civic engagement piece, the leadership piece. And then we have people really working with a lot of our nonprofit, non-governmental, and volunteer partners at the end of it, so that they can get affiliated with a volunteer organization if they'd like to, if they'd like to do more. The next, the other program that City of Loveland is starting is the First on the Scene program. So that's really more of the, kind of the first aid CPR-type stuff, the first-on-the-scene-type activities. And then the City of Fort Collins is going to start up the CERT program, the Community Emergency Response Team program. So all three of us are going to do a different program, but they all have a preparedness focus. And I think us all three doing that is going to provide our community with a really good, lot of options that they can take, and then they can go forward if they want to with additional preparedness volunteer opportunities.
So I, I don't know if you know, Lori, we did have a session, I did take, just, you know, because it's close to my house, I was curious who would show up, but I did, I used to be at the Volunteer EMT and CPR and all that stuff, but I took the First on Scene from that class. And I don't know if you followed that, I sat next to these two young gentlemen that were taking the class, because they were in the middle, they're graduating seniors, but also taking their EMT class or Front Range or something. And then a couple of weeks later, they actually saved someone inside the McDonald's that was having an overdose, and they administered Narcan and saved their lives. And so we, we honored them at our Administrative Matters Meeting. And it was very, it was, you know, I was really impressed with the hands-on and the amount of information they provided. But even just the community talking with the fire department and the emergency services folks, and shout out to Thompson Valley Emergency Services, you know, the coach and the, and Chief Robinson and Chief Sennelbeck for the collaboration, because not always do groups like this collaborate. And it's phenomenal, their collaboration, their work. But just even making those connections and introducing themselves to folks and having those conversations with the community members, because there was, you know, there was probably 20 people in that class, and it was, it was great that people wanted to know more and be able to do more, because they realized the response time is going to be lengthy. They didn't complain about it, they just recognized that that is just a fact. So I wanted to say if, to everyone, if you haven't taken this class or you haven't known about these programs, literally, you could save a life, one person can make a difference. And that class was a perfect example, even a young man of fortitude and calmness at 18 made a difference. So just, I want to just kind of tell the public, if, if it was listening in, take advantage of these. You'll, you'll be surprised how much you learn and how much community connections you make, so thank you.
That's a great story. The Dare to Prepare program, Camille has done this program, well, she didn't do the entire program. She, she kind of tested the program with some community members, where she went through what we were going to be teaching, how we were going to teach it, and she got really positive feedback for it. So she is going to take it through one more run-through, make some changes, do another run-through with a group of people, and then we're going to do a beta test, where we're going to do an actual class for the Dare to Prepare, and we'll see how that goes. So that's coming this fall, and then it will be a regularly offered program. Some other events that we have going on, we've been doing all kinds of community events. As you guys know, you guys are at all the same events, I think that we are most of the time. So all of the fire events and the community events, the pancake breakfast. One that's coming up is on July 8th is the Pinewood Springs evacuation drill. So this is the first time that we're doing this drill. We would like to do it every year, where we pick a community, and that community is actually going to get an emergency notification from LITA, and they're actually going to evacuate and go to the fire station, and then we'll do a preparedness event from there. So right now, I think that Camille said that she had 50 or 60 people that were signed up so far. So they're hoping to get to about 100, that's about what the capacity would be for the fire station. So we're, we're looking really forward to that event. Cole also just put on a reunification exercise in Estes Park, so he's going to talk about how that went.
All right. I'm Cole Parrott, Deputy Emergency Manager for Laramie County OEM. Yeah, so back in 2022, we went through the process of creating a reunification plan. So I guess to summarize that, reunification is that operation where you reunify friends and family post usually a mass casualty event or something, where people are away from each other and need to be reunified. So we're working on a number of plans, that being one of them. And once we finished that last year, we actually, we did a training with the Red Cross just to kind of walk them through the process and, and do that. And in fact, we had a lot of folks in this planning process with us, and those were all the municipalities, where Fort Collins, Loveland, Estes, especially in the hospital systems, our response agencies. We all went through that, that planning process together. And so all of those folks have also signed on to this plan. So we've agreed that countywide, this is the process that we will use for reunification in that event. So whether we have an event in Fort Collins, Loveland, Estes, or somewhere in the county, the same process will be followed, and the same systems will be utilized in the hospitals, with our volunteer organizations, and on the OEM side. So that being said, last year's kind of small training we did showed us, obviously, how much more training we need to do with the Red Cross and to pull in more people. So for the last six months or so, me and the, the Red Cross team, as well as a number of other partners, including Human Services and Behavior Health Partners, have been working to put together an exercise to, to walk through this, this process. So we just did that last week, it was last Tuesday. We went up to Estes Park and we're operating out of a church that is kind of the main shelter site for if we have to do this in Estes. So we had Red Cross there. As I mentioned, we had a bunch of mental health or behavioral health providers come, as well as Human Services and Public Health, and, oh gosh, there's a bunch of other ones. Obviously, SSPD was there, the coroner was there, because they're in this process, obviously, as well. And then we had the hospital playing with us, and we had a bunch of county volunteers, as well as a number of other Red Cross and folks as well, but played as, as actors. So they went through this process as if they were being reunified with friends and family, and it was super successful. So we had, we were able to train the Red Cross, as well as Human Services on, on in case the Red Cross is not available, how does Human Services step up? And then do this operate at a reunification center, since they are kind of our backup for this, for this thing? So they were learning what to do, as well as, obviously, the coroner and the hospitals and everyone working together so we can be better prepared to do this. So we learned a lot of things and made a lot of notes of how we're going to make this system better in the future, if we ever have to do that. So obviously, Laramie County has a lot of, just in, in the whole county, we have a lot of large events. So we want to be prepared in case that bad day ever does happen, and we'll continue to hope that it doesn't, but continue to exercise. Every year, we'll do this exercise to make sure we're, we're training folks and, and stuff, yeah. So hopefully, we can get, maybe we'll get one of you guys out to, to be an actor next time.
Sure, I love that. And I'm just curious, have we ever done this before?
We have not.
In the county?
We have not done the evacuation drill, and we've not done the reunification exercise. The reunification plan was actually just written last year, so.
Okay, good. I'm just, I'm just very curious and excited to hear that, because I think there was a lot of lessons learned from Estes Park in 2020. Commissioner Kephalis.
Thank you. Does the reunification plan include procedures for reunifying not only friends and family, but small and large animals that might need to be brought together?
Not necessarily, although I think we would operate with our, with our partners at the Humane Society. And so, but we don't necessarily have a, a tracking procedure, the same way we do with friends and family reunification, but I think we'd kind of do it fairly similar to, to the way we do evacuation with large and small animals.
Yeah, when we talked to the Humane Society, they said they'd use their day-to-day procedures. You have a dog that's running around, they would get the dog, and then they would just use their typical process for trying to reunify that animal with their people.
And this afternoon, we have a, a work session, part of our work session this afternoon is the, from the Laramie Humane Society to look at the provisions for our renewal of our contract in 2024.
They're a great partner. Renew your contract. All right, anything else, Cole? Okay. So as you guys know, also from the resilience side, not just the preparedness program, but we did do that community resilience survey last year. It was kind of a small group. So this year, we expanded that, and that survey is now out. It was out a couple of weeks ago, and we have it up on our website. We have a QR code for it. We also have it on paper, so Ricardo and Camille, when they're out at events, they can talk to people about the survey, try to get results. Ricardo's also really trying to target specific populations, like people with disabilities, because last year, we had that number where people just don't think the resources exist. So we're trying to get more information about, do the resources not exist? Or do they not have the right information about the resources, which is, and it could be both, right? So trying to get more information there. So that survey's out now, so if you guys are at public events, you know, ask people to fill out that survey. That allows us to then, not only for OEM, but also countywide, to see, is there something really that we can do better to make our communities a little bit more resilient and better connected? And I think of these programs, now that we're all kind of starting up preparedness again after COVID, I think these programs are going to be really good, because once people get educated about the value of community connections, and we're going to talk more about that, too, with the mitigation programs as well, I think that they'll be better off, too. So that's really the preparedness resilience kind of stuff for now, and I'm going to switch over to the mitigation side, unless you guys have any questions for me at this point. We're good. Okay, I'm going to go ahead. I don't think you guys have been formally introduced to Josh, even though you've met him. Josh Roberts is new to the emergency management team. He comes to us from Texas. He has a lot of experience, probably more experience than I do in emergency management, and he decided to become our mitigation coordinator. So it's been great to have him here, and he is here with Reina, who has started with the Sheriff's Office as well. So I'm going to have them introduce themselves, and then they're going to talk you through kind of where we're at with our mitigation programs currently, but then also some ideas about where we could go. And I think it really lends itself well to the presentation you guys just heard regarding greenhouse gas emissions and how we can maybe better use waste and biomass and those types of things. So Josh?
Welcome. And, and can I just say, Lori, your, your team and Derek included, that we're up at the Glacier View Firewise Vet, and just amazing outreach, the community was just super excited, the energy was palpable, and just, I wanted to say, well done, and they were very engaging, and, and Josh was very helpful, and Reina and Derek. People just could tell, they were so thrilled, the county was there, and were coming and asking questions. And I love it when the, the community was like, well, did you know this and this? And I'm like, yeah, I did, but I was so glad that they did, so that was pretty exciting, so.
That was Josh's first solo event, so he did well. That's good.
Well, I had Reina and Derek there to, you know, help out, phone a friend there. So Josh Roberts, your new mitigation coordinator, and, and thanks for your, your time here, Commissioners and Loretta. It's really good to have a chance to visit. And, you know, also, it affords me an opportunity formally to just tell you how excited I am to be here, to work with such a great team, you know, with such respected and supportive leadership, you know, with, with you guys, and just for such a great community. So, you know, as Lori mentioned, I'm not new to emergency management, but I'm new to the area. And so Lori also asked me to just provide an update on priorities and maybe a couple of key projects that we got going on, some updates on those. So in terms of priorities, being new, one of my top priorities, of course, is picking up the baton from my predecessor to just continue that strong work that, that he's done on, on that solid foundation there, and to make sure no balls are dropped in the process of the new guy coming in. But, but at the same time, you know, I'm really learning a lot. So, you know, I've worked in other places of the country that's got a slightly different risk profile, so lots to learn, some great partners in the area to learn them from. So meeting a lot of new people to figure out how I can effectively serve in that role as your, your mitigation coordinator. So with that said, please know I'm 110% open to, to things that, to your insight and guidance here, you know, things that I need to learn, items I need to connect with and become familiar with, and certainly people to meet. So if you've got any of those suggestions, I'm all ears, happy to, to meet some folks. So as far as just updates on some key mitigation projects, the Colorado Strategic Wildfire Action Program, the COSWAP grant, the Landscape Resilience Investment Grant that we received, it's about a million-dollar grant award from the Colorado Department of Natural Resources, and it was for purposes of just fuel treatments, mitigation work on about 450 acres or so roughly in the Waltonia-Pohill area. So just a little status on that. Significant pre-work planning has been done and completed, you know, to include things like landowner identification, outreach to those landowners, things like that. Forest inventory, tree markings are done in a lot of places. Contractors have been engaged. Specific treatment plans for certain locations have been completed or in the process. And I understand some walkthroughs have been done, too, with emergency services, you know, a bunch as well. The good news is that actual work has also started. So in talking with the Laramie Conservation District, one of our partners in the grant, they've done about 50 acres or so thus far across a few different properties. So, so that's great news. And then on one of our other properties, in addition to emergency services here, Big Thompson Watershed Coalition, I believe they've issued an RFP, Request for Proposal, for contractors to engage on, on those properties that they were going to do in Waltonia proper. So that's an update on that project. The next sort of big project I'd like to give an update on is the Crystal Lakes Fuels Reduction Project, and that is another grant through FEMA, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We applied for roughly a million dollars worth of grant funding there to assist with that. FEMA has decided to award it in two phases, so they've awarded Phase 1 for purposes of doing an archaeological study of the area. That's been completed, so status update on that recently. And so we've sent those results, and they're at FEMA right now. And what FEMA will do is they will then look at that and determine Phase 2 portion of the work for actual implementation. So good news here is that there doesn't appear to be anything in the archaeological study that would preclude, you know, the follow-on award. However, it's, it's up to their determination to do so. I think some things that they found in the project area, again, this is Crystal Lakes subdivision, some can splatter, an old log structure, and maybe an old road, but nothing that it would appear that would preclude, you know, work from continuing. So maybe not so good news is that it's probably going to be a few months before we hear something back on the official award and move forward. We're certainly doing what we can on our end, so what we're going to do at the moment is just prepare some RFPs, RFQs for a forester to kind of oversee the work, as well as contractors to do the work, and we can go ahead and let those bids out contingent upon receiving the, you know, the Phase 2 portion of the grant. So we want to do what we can to maximize our time. Of course, it's up in elevation a little bit and with snowpack, so, you know, we just have to be smarter with the timing of such. So it's an update on, on, on that project there. And please, if you guys have any questions, feel free to.
So Josh, real quick, I know you mentioned some partners. This is also part of the Northern Colorado Fire Shed collaboration and kind of that planning. These are all kind of part of that collaborative landscape, kind of planning, what's the next big projects? Is that, is that, is this part of that? Because I know there's, there are several areas in the Pooter Watershed that are planned that are kind of like contiguous pieces, and now we're kind of seeing more work down Waltonia. Is it still kind of the same conversations and the, and the part of that same collaborative? I, I'm asking because I have been involved a lot in being at a lot of those meetings, and I know this was mentioned, I just want to make sure my recollection is correct.
Yeah, great question and great point. And I'll just say, you know, especially being, you know, a new person coming in, there's a ton of just tremendous, tremendous collaboration and work that's going on throughout the county, throughout the Northern Colorado Fire Shed Collaborative Service area. And certainly, these projects, you know, are into that conversation, along with all the other projects that are going on, and a big push and initiative, and I'm, and I'm sure you don't please, you know, add to it here, is to figure out how we can stitch some of these things together for landscape scale, you know, kind of work. So it's all goes into the mix of the conversation, and, you know, I think that's one of the purposes of the group, really, is to coordinate on some of these projects so we can move the needle, you know, in a large way instead of a patchwork approach. I don't, Lori, anything to add on that, or?
Commissioner Kephalis.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, Josh. So I, I would think that what you just shared, that it integrates with the Arapahoe Roosevelt National Forest, the Black Diamond regional landscape, I'm not sure if I can get the whole recovery and resiliency project, and I think we're in the objection phase. Can you speak to that at all, sir?
I don't know if I can speak to the Black Diamond project really eloquently, but I, you know, I will say that, you know, Crystal Lakes, obviously, you know, is adjacent, you know, to that, that land. So there is some amount, you know, of connection to that project, you know, a little bit. I, you know, I, I know they're sort of in the objection phase of that project. Anybody else have any? Go ahead, Derek.
Well, and Derek, I think also we, we know that our non-geon partners, like Coalition for Pooter Watershed, have been extensively involved with that and providing a lot of input on that. And I'm, I'm going to be commenting on the objection phase, just because I really would love to see the county be more at the table in the future, but go ahead, Derek.
Okay, yeah, I actually just sat in in a meeting with the Forest Service and a lot of our partners the other day, looking, they call it the POD and Ribbon Study, with the idea of crea, with potentially operational, operational delineations and creating a ribbon of those all the way from the Wyoming border, all the way down to I-70. And what we talked about at this past meeting was basically from the Wyoming border down to Highway 14. And the area that Josh was talking about up at Crystal Lakes was in one of those priority areas for treatments. So it is getting linked in. And then some of the stuff with COSWAP, the COSWAP project, having been involved in the scoping of that through the fire shed, you know, that was pushed through the fire shed.
Thank you, Derek, as well as the updated community wildfire protection plans. That, that's the community aspect of all this, yes. Thank you kindly.
Can I ask a quick question? Derek, how, have you just recently becoming more involved with the POD and Ribbon conversations with this Black Diamond? Or have you been all along, or just curious?
So the POD, this last meeting I went to was kind of the first one, where they're starting to really start to, you know, it's more at that strategic level, but getting all the cooperators together and actually putting lines on a map of what are the first priority level, what's second priority level, with the idea of building this in layers.
And have you, I would just kind of, I don't know, I've talked to Captain Schellheimer, but when we talk about the PODs down to Hosa Valley, the ones that are proposed down there, I'd love to just get an update or maybe talk with you, because I just learned about them the other day, and I had no idea that we were, they were on the map, too. So I'd just love to kind of keep in that, that loop, because I have, I'll get a lot of questions from that community, and it'd be great to understand what's happening, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's going to be the, of course, they're going back to all of the Okay, yeah, I think that's going to be the, of course, they're going back to all of the researchers, planners and everything with that stuff. And then the next section that we're looking at is from Highway 14 down to kind of into Boulder area. So that should be on the next, the next meeting.
I think, yeah, I think this one's rolling well down to the Boulder County-Larimer County border. So, okay, I appreciate it. And thanks for attending those because I was concerned that we didn't really have a lot of representation at the table. So I'm glad that you're there now. So I am still going to make a comment about that though. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And certainly, you know, if there's any particulars about the Black Diamond project, you know, with respect to that, happy to follow up on it. So another update, you know, we've got a number of other federal grants that were sort of through our office, through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program that's administered by FEMA at the national scale. But they're the Bucs Elder Rain Gauge Project, the Master Water Plan, the Icare Report that Heidi mentioned earlier. You know, all of these projects at least have a portion of some of the costs, you know, funded through these grants. And, you know, as you can see, you know, these are managed by some of our colleagues at other departments and they're well off to the races. So going good there. And then Lori also asked me to just give you a quick update on the Black Hollow Acquisition and Demolition Project. So we haven't been awarded anything yet. We've just applied for it. But good news is that that application is off of our desk and it's at the federal level now being reviewed. So likely it'll be, you know, months before we hear back from it. But summarize the details, it's six properties that, I want to say 1.7 million roughly and some change, you know, total grant award there. But six properties total that have indicated that they'd be interested in and working with us on a buyout and demolition project to those structures that were damaged during the Black Hollow Flood. Lori, anything that you wanted to add on that?
Just the other piece is the benefit cost analysis came out really high. So that helps us in trying to get the award. They are running out of the COVID dollars that they were using and the Cameron Peak dollars that they were using. There's still the Marshall Fire dollars, so we're hoping we can get into one of those. If not, though, they said it's still going to be kind of a high priority for whenever we get hazard mitigation monies in the yearly process. So I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you, I appreciate that update. And Senator Hickinlibber's office helping with that, kind of helping us shepherd that through because I know they had a very high interest in.
We haven't been working with the senators yet on this because right now we're just going through the process. We did work with the technical assistance group with the HSCM to make sure their application was as competitive as possible. And that's when the benefit cost actually went up with some new costs that we put in there. So, you know, fingers crossed, but I keep kind of pushing them that this is something I think really has to happen. And we've already had some fatalities because of this area. So I think that that's why that benefit cost analysis came out, so hi.
Thank you.
Is there a local cost share, remind us of that? And if so, have we set that money aside?
It's 10% local. It's usually 25%, so that's good news for us. So it'd be 10% that we would be paying at the county level.
We do have it in our disaster fund.
And, you know, a quick little status update on that too, as far as my next steps. I'll soon be reaching out to those property owners that have indicated that they wanted to participate with us, just to introduce myself and, you know, offer my contact information in case they had any questions at all. I talked with one gentleman on Friday, you know, about he had some questions. So in case we have any of those property owners listening, my name's Josh, I'll call you soon. And, you know, and that, just a quick note, since we're talking about cost-benefit analysis, I thought it would be important to note. There's a cornerstone study in our industry in the realm of disaster mitigation that has been updated recently within the past few years. And it, you know, it's a tremendous number of experts, you know, across the nation, some, you know, heavy hitters intellectually in the space and it's peer reviewed. And of course, it just sort of evidences that disaster mitigation, while it does save lives and protect property, it also saves money. So, you know, one of the things that the report really offers is some cool data that really displays how mitigation saves money. And in fact, they took a look at all of the federal grants in the mitigation realm recently. And they turned it into, for every dollar you spend on mitigation work, you save six in response and recovery cost. So just thought I'd tone that out there for you guys. Can you tell I'm a little biased about disaster mitigation?
Yes.
You know, and another key project and just really, really cool program that we have that, you know, here in the, in this, in our office, is the Community Mitigation Grants. So we're in the second year of our Community Mitigation Grant Program where you guys provided for about $50,000 total pool, competitive grant really for communities and neighborhoods, you know, in our areas, in our county, for purposes of disaster mitigation work, increasing resilience among their neighbors. Just give you a quick status on that. All awards have been made. All awardees have met their initial requirement where we ask them to do a kickoff meeting. It's a way to bring people together, share information, exchange contact info, break bread, really get to know one another in their own communities, and they're off to the races. So the types of projects funded by this, forest treatments, right, wildfire mitigation, chipping, reducing, you know, some of the fuels there, hauling it off, acquiring power tools and things for a tool library that people can check out if they don't have a pole saw or a, you know, big Husqvarna or anything like that. They can, you know, just rent it, check it out and then bring it back. So it's a cool program and some of the feedback that I'm hearing on that particular program is that, you know, folks are really enjoying it. And it seems to be doing some good work. So kudos to you all for that program. Any questions?
Commissioner Stevens.
I have a question about, so all the $50,000 worth of funds have been allocated. So are people spread out throughout the county that are accessing those dollars? Is it pretty well spread out?
It is, all the way from Pinewood Springs to Glacier View, you know, yep.
Yeah, they look at that in the prioritization process to make sure that we're not just impacting one area, that we're impacting the county as a whole.
And is this the first year? I can't remember.
Second year.
Second year.
Yeah.
So we did $50,000 last year and $50,000. Does it get taken up pretty quickly? Do we have kind of a waiting list or do people that are wanting to jump in for future years?
Yeah, we definitely had a whole lot more requests this year than we were able to fund, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And maybe as we look at the budget, we can consider kind of, because in keeping with your thoughts about mitigation saving money, right? I mean, if there's more need, you know, maybe we should take a look at that and see, you know, do we need to allocate, you know, $20,000, $25,000 more in dollars to be able to get that return on investment of $6 back? So, thank you.
And I did send out inquiry information to double back and ask again about that conversation with the Department of Natural Resources and the Forest Health. I think there's, there was some legislation in 2021 that I thought was supposed to be help funding local community programs. So I'm following back up with a direct ask about, because I think several people, when we had staff come and present to the legislative committee, we, that was brought up, that there is funding to help match or bring that up. So I did get that email off and thank you for reminding me. But we'll, I'll be digging into that to see if we can also leverage those resources to maybe increase the amount of money. Because I know it goes pretty darn quick. So my quick question real for you, Josh, is the, you know, the, we hosted the Forest Health Council and we took that field trip and the grant, I think it was between the Big Thompson Watershed and Coalition for Pooter Watershed. And I think now it's under the care of the Love and Fire Rescue Authority, the Air Curtain Burner. Is that available for some of these projects to be borrowed or used and is it rented? And because that's an important piece too with what we do with the biomass, so just curious about that.
Yeah, great question. I know they're making plans to figure out some good uses of that. But I think, Raina, you could probably speak to this, you want to do it now or? Wait, yeah, go ahead.
Or do you guys want Raina to go through her PowerPoint really quick and then we can do questions towards you?
And just let me know if you need to do time check. I know we have, this is, I could talk about this all day as you know.
We could too.
You need to like, make sure I keep the time checked, but yes. And thank you, Raina, it was great to see you again, so.
Yes, hi, Raina Eshelman, wildfire partner, program coordinator for the Emergency Services Unit of Larimer County Sheriff's Office. Thanks for having us today. And thanks to the commissioners, we saw you at Glacier View's Firewise event. I know that means a lot to them. They're working so hard on the wildfire problem out there. To see their commissioners out there was really helpful, so. So yes, let me, before I forget, I'll speak to the Air Curtain Burner with, that's in the Station 7 of Love and Fire Rescue. I just spoke with Chief Sendelbach about it at a meeting a week or so ago. They are working out the logistics and legal aspects of taking that onto private property and how would that, how would that work legally and waivers and whatnot? So they are working on that. It's not currently available to rent out, but I know that there's interest in that and they're working on that, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Sure. So kind of the piece of the puzzle that I wanted to bring forth today was some collective feedback from all of the partners that are working so hard on the wildfire problem. The conversations that are going on between partners in watersheds, fire sheds, state forests, our unit, OEM and others are, if we think of our wildfire interventions as kind of a river is the way I picture it. The first step is to get people into the water, into their raft, which is the educational piece. And as you pointed out, you know, you had people at Glacier View telling you, you know, did you know this and that? And they're very excited to share their knowledge. So I think we can feel really good that our educational outreach is working. People are receptive to the information, they're taking it in, they're processing it. So the educational piece, getting people into the river, into their raft, that's working. As we flow down the river, the next thing that we come to is the mitigation. Is, is we've educated people on what they need to do or what they could do to make their properties more wildfire resilient. That's my role at the individual homeowner and the HOA level and Realtor groups and whatnot. They're receptive to the education, then they, they know what they need to do. Part of what I'm building is an ambassador program across the county where fire departments would be trained by me and supplied with software and scheduling support to be able to send ambassadors out to do those home assessments and offer the homeowners free roadmaps of what they could do to make their homes more fire-adapted. So that's what I'm building out now. We already have three fire departments solidified that want to be our first ambassador groups, that we're getting all the legal things in place to allow that to happen. So already moving forward. But the conversations that are going on with all of our partners are that we can see ahead in the river as we're floating down past the education and mitigation points. There's a log jam in the river and that is what to do with all the material that's being mitigated. So our programs across partnerships are being so successful already that we already have hit that log jam in the river with several programs. So for example, Glacier View, I'm going to brag on them for a bit, they just formed their Fire Adapted Community Alliance, all community volunteer-led. They have identified 14 major roadways that are vital for egress and ingress for evacuation for wildfires, floods. They have their own community mitigation volunteers group, including an 84-year-old volunteer who was out there with a chainsaw, doing incredibly difficult work because they're very passionate about it. They've only been able to mitigate two roadways, they're going to be able to do one more, and they're going to hit that log jam of what to do with the material. And they're going to have to stop their work. So just one real-life, real-time example of the challenge. So what we are proposing is to form a wildfire fuel task force to research the problem and bring you recommendations on a variety of solutions. So the goals would be to include at least one representative from entities that are working on the mitigation problem at all levels. My, my personal level is the individual homeowner and the HOA level, but we have partners working on huge landscape parcel projects. And we are all running into this problem of what to do with the material.
We're having the same exact conversation the last year in the Forest Health Council Legislative Council. We're getting ready to make our recommendations. It is something that we've had a lot of discussions about recently. It is, it is a statewide issue. If you, I would love to touch base with you before our meeting in the next two weeks because we're forming our major projects. But it'd be great to have some more stories to share because there's just so much we could tackle. But I'd like to have a more in-depth conversation. I just want to put a pin in that.
Yeah, I would welcome that.
Because it is something I keep talking about and I don't know what the answer is, but we have to have some funding to maybe help with these things. So let's talk later.
Okay.
Sorry, I needed, I wanted to say that before I forgot.
Yeah, I look forward to that opportunity to go more in-depth with you. So we visualize this task forces, the goal is to identify and document what the current and future one, five, 10, 20-year goals are, what the issues are, as far as mitigation fuel processing. And then provide highly researched recommendations to you. Yes?
Sorry, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Stevens has a question.
Yeah, I wonder when we're having those conversations, are we looping in our solid waste folks?
Yep.
That's part of the, yeah, part of what the task force envisions as currently, it's being discussed among the wildfire people. But there are certainly partners that we would like input, that we would need their collaboration to make what we're proposing here work, so.
And statewide, we're actually having those people come and having people bring some of that information. So yes, we're trying to loop them in as well. It's part of the conversation, thank you.
Great. So every photo you'll see in the presentation here is from Larimer County. We talk about the goals of the task force. The first one is to reduce, we're removing biomass or woody biomass along strategic parcels. So we want to make it clear that because there's so much material to be removed, as you see in the left photo, there's so much tree litter in some of our areas that you literally can't even walk on the ground because you're just walking on tree litter. So the enormity of the material that needs to be moved is huge. So that's where the Community Wildfire Protection Plans come into play to sort of funnel down the most highly prioritized areas that we're going to mitigate. The right photo there is Glacier View's Community Mitigation Volunteers. They're mitigating along one of their key egress roadways in accordance with their CWPP. So they're doing amazing work there, but are running into that problem is they're reducing risk by reducing biomass. They need options to process and alter that biomass so it's less hazardous and not just being treated as garbage as it is now and sometimes ends up in the landfill. Another goal of the task force would be to look at ways to reclaim the sustainable energy, the value in this fuel. We have, up to this point, a lot of conversations have been that this wildfire fuel is just trash. When, if we could reframe a little bit and think of it as a sustainable energy resource. And then look at ways to develop critical infrastructure across Larimer County in a networked approach. So people aren't in silos as they are now, doing great work, but nobody knows that they have, for example, the air curtain burner that's available. I really kind of see it as just as much critical infrastructure for our area as the bridges that's getting built in Minneapolis to support their commerce. And to start thinking of some options like what we see here that could go at our landfill or a similar site. So what you see here is a air curtain burner that burns clean versus just letting fuels burn in a wildfire, burns very dirty. So it's clean burning. It would allow biomass to be burned almost year-round. So we'd have a lot more opportunity and wouldn't be as limited by the snow and wind and weather conditions that open pile burning is. And these PG air curtain burners produce electricity, so they're completely self-sustaining, they don't burn liquid fuel. They produce electricity that is fed back into the power grid. And they can do that during peak hours during the summer, which is a huge benefit. They also can capture the heat coming off of the burn box to heat buildings, as we see in the example here with the conduit going to the building. And they're also set up to support the conversion to electric vehicles that our previous presenter was discussing. As grapplers and front-end loaders become electric and sort of fuel-powered, these devices are ready to support that. Other options are biomass boilers, which basically instead of burning natural gas or other liquid fuels, the biomass that is taken out of our high-hazard areas can be converted to pellets. Pellets can then supply these biomass boilers that heat the water and heat the buildings. these biomass boilers that heat the water and heat the buildings. And then part of the task force would be looking at how do we repurpose the wildfire fuel and recognize that it is a valuable commercially viable product line. So Colorado State Forest Service, I brought one of these pamphlets for each of you, they already have done an extensive work with local vendors about how to repurpose this woody biomass that otherwise would be waste into commercial products that are already viable and on the market right now, from home heating pellets, that's a primary source of home heat for our citizens out in Pooter Canyon and the Estes Valley area. And everything you see here is actively on the market and being done right here in Laramie County. So biochar now exists in Berthoud. It's a soil enhancer that has wide agricultural uses here in Laramie County. Finish Wood Project Panels are being made in alt from woody biomass with material that isn't good for lumber just on its own, but is being repurposed at this saw mill to make project panels. Pine Right Soap that I use, this is available, it's actually made on Smokey Avenue, ironically named right here in Fort Collins. So they have a whole product line of hand soap, cleansers, lotions and lip balm that is commercially available and all made from woody biomass waste. And then there is a new project in Boulder. Boulder Mushrooms is making this enzyme additive that can be added to a wood chipping process. They make blocks of this enzyme that can go through the wood chipper and added to the chips to help it break down faster. So even in areas where we don't have an option to remove the fuel, remove the chips, that enzyme can be added to it to make that fuel break down faster. So a point here is that there are a variety of ways to rethink, reframe and repurpose our woody biomass into commercially viable products. All of these companies are already up and running and are open to partnerships. And I just included some resources for you. I know you have a copy of this presentation if you wanted to watch some videos on air curtain burners and how they work and all the other things. And then just had some suggestions on people possibly to include on the task force. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That's really exciting to hear and would love to stay up to date on that because since that's, we're looking at legislation to help support these efforts, I really think it's important that I kind of stay plugged in with that, because we're having a lot of conversations. And I know I might have some, a couple of state senators who want to talk to you. So I might connect you. So that would be exciting to do.
Perfect.
Colleagues, have any other questions? We're about out of time. Are we, how are we with your presentation, Lori?
We're done with the presentation.
Okay. So.
John had a question.
Commissioner Kofalas.
Question for later, because we don't, we only have a minute, regarding the biomass conversion and the air curtain burners. Does that mean that it will greatly diminish the amount of open pile burns that the U.S. Forest Service does? I mean, typically now we just do open pile burns. Does that mean, I don't think I want an answer now, but I'm curious.
Okay. Yep, we can discuss.
You know, I know we're meeting on another topic tomorrow. Perhaps that might be a good time.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm curious about that, whether or not, they've burned thousands of piles and whether or not it's feasible to perhaps lessen that, you know, less air pollution and all of that and use that energy. Thank you.
Yep, we can sure discuss that. Yep.
And I did bring up to the landfill, some of these ideas and how maybe we could partner, one, it's greenhouse gas, two, it helps them with keeping the woody biomass out of the landfill. And then three, it allows us to do a lot more with the biomass. So they were definitely open to that. But the conversations just started. But they would be a great partner.
I think that fits in with their diversion ideas as well, that they'll be talking about once they resolve the landfill issue.
Well, I'm super excited. Well done. Great presentation. This is some of the conversations we've been having last few weeks. So I'm just, like I said, I could talk about this for hours. So appreciate the conversations and the presentation. Well done, everyone. Appreciate the work you're doing. It's really critical work and important work and certainly want to keep this, not in the rearview mirror, but certainly in front of us, because we have a lot of work to do. And I would love to see if there's a chance to, I know Pooter Watershed and/or the Conservation District had mentioned about getting, since Maltonia is very close to where I live, would love to come and do a walkthrough tour like I did on McGregor. That would be great. So, thank you. And Lauren, did any other, I mean, this is just great work, phenomenal. I just, I might be biased, but I think we're kind of leading the way here. So appreciate the work that you do. So with that, at 12:01, thank you for joining us. We are adjourned.